Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 26, 2023 work session of the Hamaico County School Board. The first item on our agenda today is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda for today is closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under item A1 of section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, salaries, discipline, and release of contract for specific school board employees, including the evaluation of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will now go into closed session. We will reconvene this work session at the conclusion of our closed meeting. Good afternoon, and welcome back to our work session. The next item on our agenda is the certification of closed session. Board members, may I please have a motion to certify closed session?
I move that the school board certify by a recorded vote that, to the best of each school board's members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you for the motion, Ms. Atkins. May I have a second?
Second.
Who wants it?
Me.
Okay. Mrs. Shea, motion second by Mrs. Shea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Closed session has been certified. And the next item is items from the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon. For the next item, I am very pleased that we will be sharing with you our recommended fiscal year 2024 budget. You do have details of that recommended annual financial plan in front of you, and Mr. Wack is going to come forward and provide an overview of that presentation. Would like to note that he's also joined by a number of integral members of the budget team. They've put tremendous effort into bringing this forward, and so kudos to Mr. Wack and his team for that. Really appreciate the work done. You'll see that this recommended budget proposal, you know, really does account for priorities surfaced by this board that are present in our strategic plan, and of course, requests from a wide variety of stakeholders. The recommended budget proposal will be considered at a school board public hearing on February 9th before planned approval with any amendments on February 23rd. It will then, of course, be transmitted to the county manager for incorporation into his proposed budget to be presented on March 14th. And of course, it does not yet include any funding for potential salary increases for school employees, which are absolutely a priority and being considered, but those are considered separately during the March countywide budget process. I will also note two items that are likely of interest and budget-related but have upcoming presentations separately. Our information related to the career ladder, second year implementation, that'll be coming forward for the board in February, as well as the student fee schedule, which comes forward later in the spring. But those items aside, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Wack to provide you information on my recommended budget for 2023-2024. Mr. Wack?
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This afternoon, I'd like to share with you the recommended fiscal year 2024 budget. Before I start, again, I wanted to recognize our budget director, Debbie Hargrave, and Amy Barnes is here with us, and unfortunately, Maria Wyman was not able to attend today, but definitely appreciate all the effort that has gone into this proposal. The funding priorities reflected in the recommended budget directly align with our strategic plan that has been adopted by the school board. In particular, they support our four cornerstones: safety and wellness, providing support for social, emotional, cultural, and physical needs; academic growth, focusing on core curricula, collectives, and life development opportunities; equity and opportunity, reducing disparities among students from varying demographics and backgrounds; and relationships, encouraging collaboration and engagement throughout the entire community. Looking back at some of the major changes and highlights in our budget development and the availability of funds to meet our students' needs, the current year adopted budget includes 40 additional instructional assistants, 22 new licensed health positions, such as nurses, social workers, and psychologists, 12 additional specialized teacher positions, and the first year implementation of our career ladder. Meanwhile, some of the pressure on our general fund budget has been alleviated by our ESAR III grant award, which has been providing funding for 61 full-time positions, capital improvements at the campus of Virginia Randolph, and other initiatives. Furthermore, we have also been able to use one-time federal funds related to the pandemic for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning improvements, student assessment tools, and addressing learning loss, including significant expansion of our summer academy. The fiscal year 2024 recommended budget reflects the following notable changes from the current year. Our general fund budget is increasing by about 15.8 million, or 2.6% compared to our adopted budget, and that's based on the target amount that we received from the county manager. Our debt service budget, associated with previously approved capital project debt, is decreasing by 1%. Our school nutrition fund is increasing by about 5%, primarily due to updated personnel expenses, and our state and federal special revenue funds are remaining relatively flat. So overall, the operating budget from all funds is growing by about 2.2%, but again, noting that our 2024 figures do not yet include funding for pay raises, which are a budget priority of the school system and will be considered later in the process. I'd now like to walk through some of our most significant new initiatives included in the fiscal year 2024 recommended general fund budget. So starting with items associated with safety and wellness cornerstone, we have 10 new community resource coordinator positions that are being added to the family and community engagement outreach efforts. Our family and community engagement funds have also been increased to support the opening of the OGG, which is the region's first-of its kind full-service community learning center hub. We've added funds for contracted services for psychologists and social workers, and funding is also increasing for HVAC repairs and related equipment leases. Moving to items supporting our academic growth cornerstone, we are converting 20 more exceptional ed instructional assistants from temporary to full-time. We're adding five English language learner teachers in fiscal year 2024, and that's on top of five that are being added this year from vacancies for a combined increase of 10 ELL teachers. I would note this is in addition to an interpreter and two teacher positions that were recently added at the Welcome Center. Furthermore, we are increasing contracted services for exceptional education students, and we're adding core instructional materials to the general fund budget that had previously been supported by our ESAR grant funds. Now shifting to items related to equity and opportunity, we have eight positions that are being added for expanded opportunities at our A centers, and that includes our teacher apprenticeship, home health aid, and cybersecurity technology programs. We have allowed for a tuition increase at the regional Maggie L. Walker Governor's School, and we're working to eliminate a number of secondary education student fees. Those include physical education uniforms and some others that are related to dual enrollment courses. And we are also covering the cost increase for student PSAT testing. You'll recall that we have been funding that for all ninth and 10th grade students. Moving to items associated with our relationships cornerstone, our communities and schools' efforts are expanding. We have added a resource recently at Highland Springs High School, and we are expanding the number of students participating in the YMCA and Nova swimming programs, and our contribution to the Maymont Foundation is being restored to the pre-pandemic level, and we are also adding funding for a new content management system for the school's Finally, we have several items that support our strategic goal that's related to recruiting, retaining, and rewarding our employees. Funding has been added to cover the vast majority of our group health premiums increases. This budget allows for the second year implementation of our career ladder, and that includes increased tuition reimbursement and recognizing more advanced credentials of our employees. The recommended budget also allows for increased pay for attendees of the new teacher academy and daily substitutes that work on Fridays, and those are initiatives that we implemented this school year. We've also included funding for desk audits to allow for potential upgrades for our support positions, and again, in prior years, the recommended budget did not include funding for salary increases, which will be considered later in the process for both county and schools' employees under the county's unified pay plan. So the pie charts before you just illustrate our major spending categories in the general fund. You can see that instruction remains a lion's share of our expenditures at over 75% in 2024. These pie charts just illustrate the major revenue categories of our general fund budget, and you can see the target increase of just over $16.8 million makes up the difference in 2024, and that will likely come from a combination of state and local funds. As I previously mentioned, our federal and state special revenue funds are remaining relatively flat, and these funds are essentially earmarked for specific purposes and programs from our grantors. The fiscal year 2024 budget, special revenue budget, does include personnel costs related to 61 positions for one last year in our ESAR III grant. As we look past the fiscal year 2024 recommended budget, in order to plan for 2025 and beyond, we should consider the following: our enrollment trends have been somewhat unclear, particularly when considering the impact of the pandemic; we have several allocations of federal grant funds that will no longer be available beyond fiscal year 24; our safety protocols will continue to impact how we operate our facilities; and social and emotional supports have become even more vital as we consider the long-term effects of the pandemic on students and staff. And finally, compensation will always be a factor as the superintendent advocates to recruit and retain the strongest workforce possible. Looking back and looking forward, I just want to note that we did take into account public input in December, and today are presenting the 2024 recommended budget, and as Dr. Cashwell mentioned, a public hearing is planned for February 9th on that proposal, and the school board will be approving that with any amendments on February 23rd. And the school board will finally be adopting the final version of the 2024 budget on May 11th, and that will incorporate any adjustments from the county, such as for employee compensation. I did want to note that the school board members have hard copies of our 182-page budget document, and that is being posted this afternoon on our website. That concludes my brief overview. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Wack and the team. We do appreciate all the work that's gone into this such a thoughtful budget, and of course, we all await March, right, when employee raise information is made known to us. Board members, questions or comments? Reverend Cooper?
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Thank you, Mr. Wack and team, for this presentation. Can we go to slide seven? The targeted elimination of some student fees, including P-uniforms and some dual enrollment. I'm always a strong advocate for reducing and eliminating any financial burdens to our students and families when it comes to increasing access and opportunities for our students. And since it says targeted elimination of some student fees, could you share with me what criteria is used and what factors are considered in determining which student fees will get eliminated and/or reduced?
Certainly. We have a number of smaller dollar amount fees on the current fee schedule for this school year, one of the ones that we are targeting. So we did look at how much revenue is generated for the schools in each of these fees, and we also have taken a hard look at our dual enrollment fees. J-LARC did conduct a study where they were recommending that school divisions revisit those fees, and that may play into how community colleges fund dual enrollment programs in the future, but that is something we plan to bring to the school board in the spring to look at all of those fees and try to whittle down some that are, really, that would allow for as much equity and access for our students.
No, I appreciate that.
And if I, I just might, I'd love to add on to that, because I think that's a great question, and I just want to reiterate again my thanks to this board for their support in approving prior budgets the last few fiscal years where we've really chipped away at student fees, beginning with the elimination of technology and laptop fees and number of other fees that families were incurring related to instructional activity expenses, and we continue to chip away at that. We've come a long way, and you'll see that while there will be some fees in place for some of our specialized courses that might involve equipment, particularly in the career and technical ed arena, there is always financial assistance for families who need it, and so those would never be barriers to a student being able to access that course, but we're really mindful in all we do if there are ways we can eliminate any potential barrier. I'm really pleased in this budget that, you know, some work has been done with staff as they're digging into looking at those student fees, particularly around dual enrollment. I know this board has been committed to ways for us to increase that. We've talked about making sure we have staff who are qualified to teach those courses and making some financial investment and training there, but also in our budget, looking for ways where we may begin to eliminate some of those fees.
No, thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. Second question, could you go to slide nine? So if we could just talk about recruit, retain, and reward, I'm encouraged, first of all, by seeing the increased pay for new teacher academy and Friday daily substitutes, and also the expansion of our career ladder. What I would like to see or talk about is, in our recommended financial plan, is an intentional focus on strategy for recruiting, retaining teachers by hiring to staff schools. Well, I understand that there are teacher shortages is a challenge nationally and even throughout division. My concern is that we're still seeing trends of concentrations in certain districts and at certain schools. At the start of school year, I know I had a few schools in my district that led the entire division with unfilled full-time teacher vacancies, and it wasn't just in Fairfield. So, you know, how can we in our financial plan spell out recruitment retention strategy that includes funding specifically tied to providing financial incentives, professional development, tuition reimbursement, or whatever strategies to specifically address those hard-to-feel schools? Because I believe that data shows that our black and brown teachers are in high numbers, higher numbers, in our black and brown schools with a higher population of black and brown students. And the National Education Association itself has data that shows that black educators have significantly more student debt compared to white educators, $68,000 compared to $54,300 average. And so one reason is black families have less generational wealth, their children want to become teachers, they're going to have to borrow more money. So the analogy I could use is say if I know that I have significantly more debt, an incentive to have me to, you know, work in our school would be possible to be more enticing. We have the data to support the schools that historically faced the challenges year after year, so how can we include in this plan something that can speak to that, you know, so we can be equitable, but also make sure that we have equity and equality enrolled in that? Because, I mean, it's, I know it's a lot, but I'm just...
No, it's a critically important area, and I saw Mrs. Bolden jumping at the chance to address it because she and her HR team have been working hard in this area. Well, I said she was jumping up, and then she went back. I think Mr. Wack must have said, "I've got you covered," but I'll tell you, they'll probably speak to a number of things, and what I'm thinking of, and we're always looking at ways, both with financial supports, but also with the supports needed in the field to do the job well, thinking of, you know, what are those additional supports for staff who may work in really challenging schools so that they have the tools and supports they need to do their job well? So certainly, lots of investments have been made there, and I'm also really thinking of some of our teacher residency programs that are looking at that pipeline. We have partnerships with a number of our universities, and not only is this of benefit to the individual while they're in school, perhaps training to be a teacher, they are actually paid on a teacher assistant contract while working through their student teaching in partnership with a master teacher. These are placements, at least with one of our university partners, that are specifically targeting schools that meet the criteria you're talking about, and so also providing them more support coming into the profession, as well as an opportunity to begin earning a paycheck while they're in their student teaching role. So a number of creative things have been done, and we're still looking to push the needle there. I mentioned that the career ladder Phase II presentation is coming in February, so some of this we'll be able to speak to when we get to that portion, because a bit of that is, the types of things you're speaking about are built into those kinds of opportunities outside of this.
Let me be clear, I'm not suggesting that financial motivation is the only resolution. I'm just saying that it's definitely an addendum, another tool, if you will, in the toolbox that was kind of...
Yes, and I would point out, one of the things the team's done masterfully is really listening to teachers, and they've recently engaged in some focus groups with staff in our hard-to-staff schools, say, you know, what are the types of things that are difference makers? What would entice you to work in a school, to stay in a school, regarding, you know, whether it's financial, or again, what do those supports look like? What are the working conditions? What are we doing to support our educators? So all of those things are absolutely factors.
Dr. Cashwell stole most of what I was going to say, but yes, we are actively working with some focus groups to see what kind of support teachers are looking for. Our entire leadership team has taken a hard look at, there was a separate J-LARC review of teachers leaving the profession versus graduating from programs, and what, how can we innovate around recruitment and retention? And it may not necessarily be teacher pay as much as some of the other supports, behavioral support, so we're, I'm glad to highlight that we're adding 20 more full-time instructional assistants and supports around English language learners, but that is something we are revolving, and I believe the county budget, I look forward to see some details at the Board of Supervisors retreat. There was talk about a new program for mortgage assistance for schools and general government employees moving to the area, so there, I really think we're trying to look outside the box and try to see what we can do.
So are you both saying, "Stay tuned"?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Quickly, go to slide six. I only have two more questions. I'm done, Madam Chair. Under academic growth, during our September and October work sessions, we receive presentations on school accreditation, school accountability, ratings, literacy dropout, and graduation rates. We discuss root calls, analysis, leadership team supports, and the school quality plans address the accreditation. This is more of a kind of question, Dr. Cashwell, regarding how we're communicating our priorities and our financial plan in a way that tells a story of how we're being intentional and responsible to ensuring all of our schools are fully accredited and our students are meeting exceeding academic standards. So for our schools that are accredited with conditions, is there a way to highlight in our financial plan the school quality plans and the budget additions or funding that would help support those school quality plans?
Yeah, and I think that's a great question. I think what Mr. Wack's attempted to do with this presentation similarly is take budget priorities and line them up under categories, and so the one, this category of academic growth, I think speaks to a lot of the areas that are addressed in our school quality plan, so we could parse that out even more, and certainly, the slides that are part of this presentation reflect some high-level areas for funding, and you know, you have the detail in front of you, but we'd be happy to go through and just provide you some more detail there.
Well, just for an example, take, for instance, when we're highlighting the additional hiring of reading specialists or converting...
That's right.
...20 exceptional education instructional assistants full-time, this will directly impact the interventions or strategies outlined in, let's say, Fairfield Middle Schools' quality plan.
Correct.
I just wanted, you know, because the community needs to know that we are attaching financial resources.
Absolutely. And in fact, you know, as the budgets developed, you know, we're looking at school, we're looking at school needs data, you know, certainly listening to our schools, listening to our staff. We talked about what is it in regard to recruitment and retention, but also when we think about academic growth, digging into the data, looking at where we have gaps and working to make sure we have the right structures and supports and highly trained personnel, particularly around the literacy, and you've seen that again, and I've been appreciative, the support has supported increasing reading specialists and other specialized staff members so that our schools have the supports they need, the coaching they need to make a difference there.
Thanks, Dr. Cashwell.
And I'll add, this is just highlights of increases, incremental changes in the general fund budget. Some of these things are above and beyond what we, of course, what we have been doing, but with our ESAR grant funds, we have had a lot of instructional materials that are really becoming part of the core curriculum. We're going to be able to kind of work through that and not have a fiscal cliff on that side, and meanwhile, we do have 61 positions that are supported with these pandemic relief funds, but there is a reserve that we anticipate that could cover that for multiple years beyond the expiration of the ESAR funds, and staff are also very, we're very actively looking at the summer academy efforts for 2023 and 2024, and where we can complement the use of these pandemic relief funds to combat learning loss and get our students back on track.
I appreciate that, because we do not want those positions to go away. Last question is this, on slide five, this is the last one for me, Madam Chair. On slide five, under safety and wellness, could we speak to our PBIS program? Are we looking to increase any funding related to providing those Tier I, II, and III supports as it relates to staffing, supports, training, and monitoring?
So many talented staff members with lots to add, so, and I see Dr. Hughes coming forward, so I'll let her tackle that one, but certainly would say we continue to support our PBIS efforts across our schools, and so we know that much of that work is really supported by our administrators and other school personnel, but certainly want to support them in that endeavor. Dr. Hughes?
Oh, sure, absolutely. Thank you for that question, Reverend Cooper, and for keeping that as a priority. As called out in our strategic plan, we are moving towards our goal of 2025 to either having all schools engage in the PBIS process or to have a school-wide intervention program for conduct and discipline and for culture in your buildings. Fortunately, Dr. Grant and I have been able to work together to find money to increase funds for PBIS schools in-house, so we haven't had to ask that in the budget process, but we have increased the funds and have increased our funds within our own budgets for next school year and moving forward.
Well, I appreciate that, because again, to your point, you know, with our strategic plan outlining it, trying to be division-wide and making sure that we do have those necessary supports in place, I really appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Great questions. Let's see, Ms. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. Wack, for your presentation. On slide five, more contracted psychologists and social workers. So in the space of well-being and positive behavioral outcomes, can you help me understand how we're going to determine how many we need? I know that there's a shortage in this space, and I'm wondering, you know, how are we going to acquire this level of expertise in determining, also determining where they're going to be placed? Is that defined?
Yeah, before Dr. Hughes steps up, yeah, I was just, again, this is just more of an incremental change. We did add 22 licensed health professionals in this year's budget, and this is a change in that we're changing our operating budget to allow for outside consultants to help with our psychologist and social worker needs, but that's really driven by need and...
And I say, I ask the question because I understand we have those positions. We have funding to pay. So the question is more, so how are we going to recruit and entice them? Are we going towards contracting because we know it's going to continue to be challenging? However, even though we're going to try to contract, do we feel that we are going to be able to recruit in a contract space, and if so, how do we determine how many? And it's important so that I understand from a budget perspective what the costs are.
Sure. So, yes, yes, and yes to your questions. So we are still actively recruiting for the positions that we have open, because obviously we know it will be most beneficial to have our own school psychologist and school social workers on our staff. We work very closely with HR to recruit our employees and the individual supervisors for those areas who oversee school-based mental health, Liz Parker and Jen Rucker, work with organizations across Virginia and really across the nation to recruit as well. And both of them go to colleges. I mean, we're doing everything we can to try and recruit, but we know there is a shortfall. And so as Mr. Wack said, this contracted funds that we're putting into the budget that we're asking the board to approve is for those shortfalls right now. So we know when we don't have psychologists and social workers in place, there's a need, right? There's a need for our students, there's a need for assessments, there's, you know, just so many needs. And so we've, we're asking for more contracted services so that we are able to provide the services to our students and also to do all of those other roles that school psychologists and social workers do, like our assessments for child find for identification of special education services. So how we determine where those employees are going to go basically is based on need, right? So if we have a school who has more assessments that need to be done, or more students who are requiring services, we would put those students in those schools. Many times, we have school psychologists or school social workers that go out on FMLA, and we are not able to find subs per se in-house, so that's where we use our contracted services. So we do it based on need, both on what's outlined in school quality plans and then according to the needs of individual schools.
So from a budget perspective, do we have a number so that we understand, so we have, we're going to have our standing, open positions, our employees? We're going to contract to assist in fulfilling those needs? Do we have an understanding or number from a budgetary perspective of what that cost is?
Yes, and I would note, much at how they arrived at the estimate for this budget is by what we've actually been spending but hadn't budgeted for in previous years, because this isn't the first time, you know, the shortfall's been with us, and so understanding that it wasn't soon going to be a problem we're not struggling with, we wanted to be proactive in budget for it, where we've been working to pull money where we could in the current budget, because it is a significant need. So the team is... So the team is trying to be proactive here. And so they were able to, the budget figure that was given for this recommended budget is based on what has actually been used on average in the past two years, if that makes sense.
It does. So I can find that number.
Yes.
And then my second question, let's see what slide is on Slide 7. Can you share with me more insight into tuition increase for Maggie Walker Governor's School? Are we absorbing some costs? What, what are we doing there?
Maggie Walker's increasing tuition about 5% per student.
And so are we absorbing some of that cost? Is it 5% that we're absorbing?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all that I have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogburn?
Thank you. On the Maggie Walker front, I think if I'm remembering correctly, this also includes additional slots.
We funded the slots last year.
Last year.
And then this year, it's a tuition increase.
Tuition increase.
So I think it's important to understand that number because it's based on that increased number, which is more than we funded in the past.
Right. Yeah, and it's interesting, being third, a lot of the questions that they've asked already, I was going to add. But when we go to eliminating the fees on this same slide, what's, how much is that costing us to absorb these fees? Can, I mean, I haven't, I'm not going to find it on which page in the book, but do you know it offhand, how much we're absorbing in the budget to eliminate these fees, which I am so in favor of? I, you know, this is such a, I know it's been a goal since Dr. Cashwell's day one, so I'm glad to see we're continuing that work.
So we'll definitely follow up. And again, I had the, the budget staff kind of went through all, all the different fees and the fee schedule, had a collaborative group where got leadership as well as principals. Does there are certain fees, like a $4 fee, that where the cost of administering and collecting that fee might negate the value to, to the school activity fund? So where we've increased centrally in the secondary education budget, the ability to, to purchase centrally for things like PE uniforms or things like that, that we feel could be purchased centrally and not have the financial secretaries and the principals have to deal with that at the individual school.
That makes so much more sense. It's a much more efficient way, so I'm glad to see that. On the next one, the relationships, the content management system for the website, can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Good afternoon. Yes, the content management system will allow us to have better functionality for our public, for the end users. Right now, we have, we use WordPress, and it requires the communications office primarily to be updating information. And so by using a content management system, it has some of those drag-and-drop functionalities that department staff can be designated to, to update individual pages with information more quickly. And again, using the functionality of searching and just the layout and updating the page in general is going to improve the experience for people visiting our site.
Well, I mean, our website is used by so many people. I think it's great that we're making it a little more user-friendly, so I appreciate that.
It is, and it does integrate with translation services, so the page can translate. We have that for a few languages now, and that will continue with the new content management.
Okay, great. And my only other question was about the community resource coordinators, but I think we're going to get that information.
You may hear about that in the next presentation, unless you would like to add anything about that now.
That's okay. I'll wait, and we'll get it in the next, that, yeah. I just want to know more about it, but anyway.
Yeah, and I think she'll be excited to, Adrian will be excited to share.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all for me.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn, Mrs. Shea.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. I know that the superintendent and her team were looking at adjustments on the stipend scale for our employees. Is, is that tied to March compensation, or do we have any report out on that?
I'm sorry, March compensation?
Sorry. We, we're going to look at the stipend, the extra stipend compensation that we do for many of our staff. Do we have information there, or is that held with the UPP information?
But it, part of your, your budget document that you have before you, it has a list of all extended responsibilities, and there are a couple of new ones that will, that will be in fiscal year 2024.
Okay. Ms. Holden's right behind you.
As an intro.
And there are also several stipends that we need to review. Generally, you would call it a desk audit, and we need to review several in tandem. So I don't believe we will have that ready for this budget go around.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it can't be implemented, but you may not see it reflected here. But what you do see are some additional responsibility pieces in your budget above and beyond what were there previously.
So for example, if we had to take an extended responsibility from grade 23 to 24, that might be something we could accommodate without adjusting the budget as not being material next year.
Great, thank you. And I will, now that we have our book today, I will review all of those. But, so if you don't know this off the top of your head, I will look. But I know pre-COVID, we had, I believe they were called academic officers that worked in tangent and tandem with our high school athletics to ensure VHSL eligibility. Do we know if those stipends came back?
I, I can't speak to that one specifically. I know that there was a team, and Dr. Grant worked with the principals and really digging into what were all the positions there, what was still needed. A number of them had been in place an awfully long time and either weren't being utilized or there was a greater need than what was actually met. So I know they're actually around, for example, the security designee for each building, there was some revamping there and looking at the associated compensation, previous positions that had been in place for, I want to say webmaster was what it was called, but looking at really that, that position had evolved so much. So there are definitely a number that have, I don't want to say returned because they're almost different, but are similar to something that had been there prior. So I don't know about that one specifically, but I'll, I'll let you know. I'll follow up.
Well, and now that I have the book, I look forward to reviewing it. Thank you.
That's the, the digital communication liaison is one of the new ones.
Yes, which maybe had previously been webmaster. So my point is some title for title may not appear similar because they've really been revamped based on the feedback from our school personnel who said, well, really, you know, while that position was important, it really evolved into something much different over time. And so we looked both at the title, the responsibilities, and the associated compensation. So some things have titles that may be unfamiliar, but we're happy to provide any additional detail and questions.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate the fact that you really engaged our principals in that review as they know what's being utilized within their, their building and their staff. I appreciate the additional add-on for ELL staffing. I know that's been a focus last year and this year and, and much needed. In last year's budget, we decided to waive tuition for staff's children that were coming to HCPS. Is that included in this year's budget?
Yes, it is, and I believe that'll be communicated to individuals as part of that process, which launches January 30th, this week? Yes, confirmed.
Awesome, thank you. I know quite a few staff have reached out and expressed how much they appreciate that and how much it's been a game changer in terms of deciding to stay within RICO. And as we know, our people are our greatest resource. I appreciate that investment in them. And then I know, Dr. Cashwell, you and I had talked about TST positions and kind of similar to looking at those stipends that were no longer used and revamped. I know you looked into kind of old positions that weren't being used to convert into TST. Are we looking to continue that in the budget, those positions?
Yes, certainly. While there are a number of positions highlighted here as new and additional, we continue to work within our current budget, much like Dr. Hughes explained the answer to the PBIS question. So not everything counts on new money, but how are we reallocating funds we already have? And much to that point, yes, increasing the number of TSTs, particularly as they can serve our elementary schools, has been a priority. Mr. Pritchard did work to accomplish adding a number of new TSTs even in this current fiscal year, and we'll continue to work to grow that number.
Yes, we're converting existing positions in, in the operations portfolio to, to become technology support technicians for those.
Great, well, I appreciate that work at our elementary school level. I know that some of our coaches had, had shared that they were kind of filling the gap there, and so this will allow our coaches to focus on coaching and also better support our elementary staff with technology. So that's all for me, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. I appreciate you bringing up the employee variance waivers. Had a lot of interest in, in my district as well. So that's coming, what, Jan, next week, on Monday, right? Will it come, will the announcement come to those already enrolled in the program, those employees already using the program, and then?
And our announcement of the program as well, for those who may not have known or maybe knew too.
Okay, so all of it comes on Monday, January 30th. So exciting. We've done so many tremendous things with the budget, the one-time bonuses, the paying of renewal fees, higher summer school rates for our teachers, higher substitute rates on Fridays, covering class stipends. Do we, are we looking at the covering of classes? I know we've heard a lot from educators about, given our staffing crisis, right? Are we looking at putting those stipends as more part of their duties? That's not a way to put it. That's not a good way to say it. Those stipends, instead of just covering classes, are principals in buildings looking at a way to help us be more efficient maybe in our budgeting of that, where the employee knows this is now what I'm going to do versus duties on top of covering, on top of duties? What is going on in our buildings with that, and how are we going to compensate our employees?
I mean, certainly, yeah, there are lots of layers to that, very important thought. And so certainly, it's, it's an ongoing conversation, and we know that we have compensated and we will continue, if, if that's part of the question, to compensate teachers who may be covering for a colleague during their planning time. You know, our goal though is to make sure nobody's missing their planning time, and so, you know, our hope is we get to a position where that doesn't occur, but we certainly want to compensate those who, who have done that. And then to, as far as duties, duties wouldn't be the same as planning time, and those are typically assigned. But what we want to do is make sure that we're preserving teacher time as we can and making sure that their schedules are set up in a fashion where we're not putting an undue burden on our staff. And we know that some of the staffing shortages mean that the colleagues are, you know, having to work together to, in buildings to make up for that. And, and so sometimes even that compensation doesn't feel like enough. So our, our goal is to eliminate the need for that to happen. And of course, with master scheduling, make sure that our building principals are cognizant of, making sure teachers have their allotted planning time. And it may mean that the way they schedule duties in their building, to your point, looks different than it has in the past. But we continue to support our principals and their master schedule endeavors to make sure we're not stepping on anything related to teacher planning time and are being cognizant of amount of time we're asking of duties and those sorts of things.
Thank you for that detailed response. I know that while we, we can't wait until we are fully staffed, we are certainly not there. So knowing that that money is in the budget and that folks are thinking about how to readjust schedules for our employees really does make a difference, as well as absolutely protecting the planning time for instruction. I would like to ask, just kind of piggyback on something Reverend Cooper said on Slide 3, he mentioned highlighting for, in, not necessarily maybe in a, in a budget presentation way for our communities, but I would like to have, because just what we're doing this year in 2024 really doesn't tell a lot of the story of the supports we've put in place. So I'd like to ask if you could add some highlights when you do whatever you're doing outside of the budget presentation for communities, that you also include 2023? Because we really did a lot of work in the support resources that you spoke a lot to, Reverend Cooper.
The team actually put together at one point for, it may have been some sort of community presentation, a nice one-page or that looked like, particularly spoke to the academic supports around, you know, intentional efforts that you see echoed in this budget, but we know were present in the prior two budgets, really focused intentional work, not just from our Esser funding, but some of it was from that to really meet student individual needs, both academically and socially emotionally. So we can share that with the board again and update it to reflect upon any approval of this budget, how that will impact the next school year.
Yeah, that took a multi-year approach, I believe, like using 2020 as a baseline. All the positions we've added, we added about 80 instructional positions in 2023 budget, but these, we're adding about 50 more full-time positions in, in 2024 in this proposal.
And as you do, as you're doing that for the academic growth, I would also like to ask that you do it for safety and wellness, so that we can have in a, in a document the complete picture of all the things we've been doing for safety, that it's ongoing, right? The, the safety pieces in our division.
Sure.
And then that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Wax, members of DLT, all of whom were a part of answering questions, preparing this budget, and of course, the entire team with us, and Maria, who's not with us, give her our thanks as well. We look forward to continue conversations as we work towards moving to, to an improved budget. The next three items are an opportunity to review proposed revisions and recommendations related to policies, not asking for the board's action at this meeting, but did want to take an opportunity to look at three of those. The first one, which is policy, Policy P6-12-013 relates to student athletic concussions, and we are recommending that the school board retire this policy based on a redundancy. So athletic, student athlete concussions is actually also covered in P6-09-004. So I'm asking for retiring the one, and the other covers the key points there.
All right, board members, do you have any questions or comments? Reverend Cooper, Mrs. Shea, Ms. Ogburn, Ms. Atkins, and I don't have any. Next item, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. The next one is a new policy being recommended. This is Policy P6-20-007, sudden cardiac arrest prevention. This is in accordance with Virginia Code, which requires school divisions to develop and update policies and procedures regarding the identification and handling of symptoms that may lead to sudden cardiac arrest in student athletes. And of course, the school division's policies and procedures are based on guidelines that were developed by the Virginia Board of Education, adopted in September 2022, and the corresponding regulation developed, of course, as well.
Board members, do you have any questions, comments? Ms. Shea?
This may be out with, outside the scope of this policy, so feel free to let me know if it is. But tied into this and with recent events in professional athletics, the use of AEDs and the available of A, or, yeah, EADs, excuse me.
AEDs.
AEDs, okay. For our students, I know it's not addressed here, but it's an important part of kind of, you know, this health piece. I know there's a bill before the Senate right now looking at this. So not necessarily that it needs to be part of this policy now, but perhaps our regulations on the availability of those units for our athletics, just something to noodle.
Can certainly follow up and get you some info on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Ms. Ogburn, do you have anything on that?
No, ma'am.
All right, Madam Superintendent, back to you.
Thank you. The other is a proposed new policy, P6-20-008, heat-related illness prevention. And this was developed in accordance with guidelines developed by the Virginia Department of Education pursuant to Senate Bill 161 in 2022. The guidelines require that school divisions develop and update policies and procedures regarding the prevention, recognition, and management of student athletes who may be experiencing heat-related illnesses.
Board members, any questions or comments on this policy? All right, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. And again, we're looking to have approval or action from the board at our February 23rd meeting related to those policies forthcoming. All right, for the next item, sorry, I lost my place there for a minute. Item 6.01, I am recommending that the school board approve the Instructional Material Review Committee's recommendation, and you do have material associated with that review. Any questions? I would offer an opportunity to answer those, and again, seeking your approval of the recommendation of the committee.
Board members, any questions? Board members, any questions?
I just-
Mrs. Shang?
Thank you. I just want to clarify that this is a material that may be available in our libraries, not a required part of curriculum, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that item of clarity, Mrs. Shang. No questions before we vote, then? All right, board members, may I have a motion, please?
I move that the school board approve the Instructional Materials Review Committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, and the IMRC recommendation is approved.
All right, thank you. For the next item, as we kind of previewed briefly during the budget presentation, we are very pleased to provide the board an update on the Henrico County Public Schools' Community School Initiative. I know we've heard a number of presentations over the previous years about this, about the vision, then some ongoing work. We've all seen some fruits of labor recently, and now we will hear from Adrian Cole Johnson on sort of where we are and where we're headed.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Greetings, Chair Kinsella, school board members, and Dr. Cashwell. Before I jump in, I would like to acknowledge some of my staff members, some of our lead advocates who are here in the audience. We shared that we were presenting today, and so they showed up for support. So thank you all for being here. I am Adrian Cole Johnson, and presenting with me this afternoon is Japira Keyes, Specialist for Family and Community Engagement. Together, we will present an update on the HCPS Community Schools Initiative. It's been quite an exciting time as we focus on integration and understanding of the model across school communities and throughout the great county of Henrico. While Ms. Keyes and I represent the Office of Family and Community Engagement, planning for our community school initiative has been a multi-division effort. Staff members across HCPS, in particular, the Divisions of Learning, School Leadership, and Operations have been central partners in this work. It is important to note that the work of the Community School Initiative is in direct alignment with all HCPS cornerstones, as well as with Destination 2025. Fosterings an inclusive, safe, and supportive environment for all stakeholders, and cultivating and maintaining meaningful partnerships to enrich student experiences is at the heart of this model and centers the work that we are building together. We'll jump into the presentation with a reminder of what community schools are, an evidence-based strategy for equitable school improvement. Nationally, this is not a new approach, and districts are investing in the school, in the community school model. Regionally, Henrico is a leader in becoming a community school district. Understanding our efforts as a place-based strategy where schools partner with varied stakeholders, this could be community agencies, community members, and local government, it truly uplifts Henrico's division-wide commitment by communicating our shared vision of inclusiveness, the right to achieve, and the support to succeed. There are varying connection and entry points when considering the growing HCPS model and our approach. So first, and most broadly, is through all school communities viewing themselves as a community school and interacting as a community school as well. This happens when schools have identified neighborhood assets, when we're leveraging partnerships around shared and common goals, providing responsive family engagement opportunities, and working together with families as collaborators. Next, and more narrowly, are the community learning center sites. These are the after-school program opportunities provided in designated school communities, supported in partnership with the Henrico Education Foundation. Lastly, and most tailored, yet most robust in nature, is the creation of full-service community schools. This is the intentional gathering and convening of stakeholders under one roof for one purpose, supporting students and families. This is the newest approach that we've introduced and applied to our Henrico Community Schools model. But before going deeper in each of these areas, we want you to see some of the work in action. All right. Let me do video. All right. Our after-school programs have flourished with the focus on exposure, experience, and academic enrichment. Many of you attended one of our site visits to Cincinnati, Ohio, or Salt Lake City, Utah. With big thanks to Henrico Education Foundation, we were able to bring multidisciplinary teams on both visits to learn from other school districts and their model for success. The learning has been immeasurable and has been a support and guide as we create our roadmap. As we are ensuring the fidelity of our out-of-school time activities, we are mindful to include creative enrichment opportunities within our schools, as well as the exploration of activities in our communities. Our FACE team meets weekly with our peers at HEFF to address programming, and monthly meetings are held with HCPS literacy and math specialists to evaluate program lessons and activities that support the regular school day. The days are very unique and fun. The Glen Lee Telehealth Clinic continues to bloom under the leadership of Principal Gordon and the multidisciplinary telehealth team. With focused community outreach and awareness efforts, connections with community around the clinic have continued throughout the year. And you'll also see very recent footage just from last week, Tuesday, January 17th, where we hosted the grand opening and first community engagement event at The Oak. It was a great time for everyone to experience The Oak and learn more about the endeavor. Many of you all were there, but all of you all have shown significant support. The Oak has been well-received by a variety of stakeholders, parents, students, community members, partners, and community leaders. Okay, give me a second. I'm going to mess it up. Can I stop it? Give me one second, I'm going to pause, and then I'll go to the next one. Okay, here we go. So as these very, excuse me, so as these very pieces, let me do that again. All right. So as these very pieces of the puzzle work together, we, thank you, we alongside so many others are working to enhance outcomes for our learners. HCPS has talked a lot about hope this year as more than a feeling and actually a measurable strategy to support student achievement. The community school model aligns with the concept of sharing and borrowing hope and resources between those who have them and those who may need a bit more. It is our belief that all schools can benefit from being a community school and will be able to envision themselves within the model. It is a macro systems approach, yet will be accomplished through intentional work that we are committed to do. Our goal is that Henrico becomes a community school district. This means that all 73 of our school communities have adopted the model, all school communities have at least five unique and high-impact partnerships, and that all schools have a designated community resource coordinator. And Mrs. Ogburn, this may speak to what I imagine you may have been thinking about. So when you think about a community resource coordinator, think about the family advocates that we have in our schools. We've spent a lot of time looking at what we were doing pre-pandemic, what we did during pandemic, and what we're doing now. And so a community resource coordinator is really an iteration of our family advocates. And so in this phase, we have begun intentional connections to our school communities throughout the county, beyond the title-one communities that we continue to serve. We know that when we are in full partnership, we can make great gains in the lives of students. Engagement of all is our focus because engagement is the key, and the community school model centers on focused intention and continuous collaboration of all stakeholders. Next, Japira will share an extended overview of some of the efforts happening across the HCPS community school model.
Thank you, Adrian. Good afternoon, Chair Kinsella, school board members, and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Japira Keyes, Specialist for Family and Community Engagement, and I'm thrilled to come before you today to share more about the work happening in our schools with community learning centers. The seed for our first community learning center, or CLC, was with the award, was planted with the awarding, excuse me, of the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant at the Great Glen Lee Elementary School in 2017. In partnership with the Henrico Education Foundation, we were able to employ grant funds from the Virginia Department of Education to lay the foundation for HCPS's first community learning center. With a focus on academics, increased exposure to enrichment opportunities, and parent engagement, we began to think more intently about the collaboration between families, schools, and the community. We have since expanded to four more elementary schools, Montrose, Laburnum, Holiday, and Ratcliffe, one middle school, Fairfield Middle School, and one high school, Highland Springs. Each school site features an extended-day program, offering intentional academic support for students and opportunities for families to connect with their school communities. For example, our Highland Springs H2 Promise Program has honed on Principal White's focus on post-secondary planning, ensuring that the three Es, that students are enrolled in a college or career training program, enlisted in the military, or employed in the career of their choice. With increased access to mentoring, career planning, and support, as well as field trips to nearby universities, students in our programs have been given the opportunities to explore what they will embark on when they leave high school. It is important to note that while Wilder Middle School is no longer a community learning center site, we have leveraged ESR funds to continue to provide after-school programming to the Wolverine community. Across seven community learning center sites, our average weekly attendance for our extended-day program is 400 students. Out-of-school time, as we know, can be a precarious time for our students and families without viable options. Our extended-day programs provide opportunities for a safe place, as well as to enrich student learning. These students benefit from a multitude of supports, as you saw in the video, including tutoring and homework assistance, mentoring and social-emotional learning, opportunities to explore their personal interests, exposure to careers through field trips and other experiences, and so much more. Programs run not only during the school year in the after-school hours, but during the critical summer months, when concerns about learning loss and safety may arise. In addition, families of program attendees participate in a variety of programming to support their child's education. Parents and caregivers across all sites have experienced unique and robust family activities, including nutritious cooking demonstrations, family art classes coupled with social-emotional learning, and interactive literacy sessions with local authors. Just as the Lions led with our CLC sites, the Great Glen Lee was also the first site of our school-based telehealth clinic. Our telehealth or telemedicine clinic allows students to receive care from a healthcare provider without having to leave for an in-person visit. Conducted online with the use of technology, providers are able to assess and treat many of our students' ailments. Some may ask, why have access to a clinic within a school? Our goal is to preserve instructional time, thus impacting student learning. Offering these services during the day can reduce the number of days students will miss school for non-emergency medical conditions. Diagnoses made will help determine if a student can stay in school or if they need an early dismissal. While this program does not replace a regular visit to a student's care provider, it can provide information and early warnings for families. Launching in November of 2021, the telehealth clinic has truly taken root at Glen Lee, allowing the efforts of the community to model sprout in various ways. Principal Gordon at Glen Lee has embraced the clinic and has led with great enthusiasm and the community in mind. So in continuing talking about the health clinic, regarding impact, we have enrolled 25% of Glen Lee students to have access to clinic services. To note, parents are required to sign a consent form before students are able to receive services. Of students who have visited the clinic, 80% were able to receive services and still return to their classroom without losing seat time. On average, telehealth calls are answered within five minutes of requests to the Children's Hospital of Richmond. Families benefit by not having to interrupt their workday to pick up their child, and every child has had a parent or guardian actively participate in the telehealth call. I would like to give special recognition to our Community Learning Center Coordinator, Marcy Good, for leading this collaborative effort. We will continue to educate families and our staff on telehealth services offered at Glen Lee. Oh, and I have to say, the Great Glen Lee, one of our family advocates, that is one of her charming moments, to ensure that they are aware of the supports that may benefit From HCPS, school, community schools, to our community learning centers, our aim is to continue to build resource-rich school communities and provide integrated student support. The next iteration of our ACPS model are full-service community schools. To utilize a quote shared by one of our family advocates, "Out of a tiny acorn, a mighty oak tree will grow." The Oak Avenue Complex, or the Oak as we affectionately call it, is the culmination of all of our efforts thus far. Through our various partnerships, it is our aim to provide both integrated and comprehensive support for the whole child and their family. We have imagined this space for quite some time, yet it was actualized this month. Both a space and place, the Oak is our hub for full wraparound resources for students, families, and the community. Nestled on Historic Oak Avenue, located at the former Highland Springs High School, the Oak is both a nod to the past and a testament to the growth of the Highland Springs community. We received wonderful feedback from the community at our grand opening celebration. The responses about the reimagined space and the excitement about what is to come are encouraging and remarkable. The community was invited to experience what it would be like to have access to these resources in their own backyard. To quote one of our community members, "Knowing the support that is needed, even within my own neighborhood, I know that there is benefit in cooking classes and parenting classes, since a lot of parents are doing it by themselves. We need all of the support to strengthen our village, and the Oak will be just that." We started this project by conducting a listening tour to engage the community in our efforts in 2021. We then used feedback to identify and connect to area partners to align our efforts with wants and needs of the community. For example, our partnership with the Henrico Community Food Bank has allowed us to create a family essentials closet, where the community may access items to assist with meeting their basic needs. Our collaboration with Henrico Area Mental Health will help us to provide workshops and sessions and care to the community. This highlights just a couple of our external collaborations to make the Oak come to life. HCPS-specific entities that support the project include student support and wellness, federal programs, family and community engagement, and equity, diversity, and opportunities. It is our hope that the work at the Oak will help to mitigate barriers to student learning and unlock the potential to student success. At the Oak, we have planted seeds that are already starting to sprout. Our partnership pods provide opportunities for Henrico agencies, nonprofit organizations, businesses, community members, and other entities. businesses, community members, and other entities working in similar fields to collaborate on better ways to work and impact community outcomes. This has led to multi-layer collaboration, networking, and the focus on how we can collectively make an impact in our community. Central to this effort will be our full-time Community Resource Coordinator, who will work to build upon this effort and grow the collaboration by bridging more partnerships. Key to the community school model is shared leaderships. Our Community Advisory Committee is a mixed group of vested stakeholders who will help to shape and steer the effort of the full-service site. As a family and community engagement specialist, it continues to be my joy to water this effort.
Thank you, Japira. So our work ahead is steeped with creativity and innovation, and it's also filled with diligence, dedication, and true collaboration. Specific to the Oak timeline, we are currently focused on strategic alignment amongst partner programming and presence at the Oak, and defining agreements and solidifying our impact. As Japira shared earlier, we have identified approximately 15 high-impact anchor partners to support our budding efforts at the Oak, and partners were identified based on our community listening efforts and opportunities to meet the needs that have already been identified in Henrico. Having clearly identified partnership agreements and shared goals is really giving us a strong start, while still giving us some room to grow. In summary, the proverb "many hands make light work" is exemplified in the comprehensive community school model. We are grateful for you, our school board, who understands the vision and supports the work through your commitment and funding. And so again, thank you, and at this time, we are happy to receive any comments and answer any questions.
Thank you so much for this presentation. We've been, we've been waiting. I know it was very exciting when Reverend Cooper and, and all of us were at the telehealth at Glen Lee, opened that, and same could be said at, at the Oak with Ms. Atkins. So, it's kind of a toss-up who to start with for comments and questions. I think I'll start with Ms. Atkins.
Thank you, Chair. It's a beautiful thing when your passion aligns with your career, and that's what I see. And it's not just the leaders, but it's your whole staff. That makes a difference when the leadership and the staff are aligned and those two things match. This is what it produces. I also want to thank Dr. Cashwell for seeing something that had never really been done before and saying, "I trust you." It's important, so thank you. I do have a few questions, and the first one is, if, can you repeat the list of CLC sites I captured? Highland Springs High School, Ratcliffe, Montrose, Glen Lee, but there were some others.
Yes, so we've got Montrose, Ratcliffe, Glen Lee, Laburnum. Yeah, Holiday is a newer site. Then we've got Fairfield Middle, and we have Highland Springs High School.
Fantastic. Also, can you share some of the communication efforts that you have planned so that folks know about all of the resources? And of course, that's a work in progress, but the communication efforts that you plan to deliver to talk about the Oak and its resources?
Absolutely. We have been deeply supported by our Communications Department, logos, material that we've created. Recently spoke to Mrs. Cox about really drilling into, as we have developed what it looks like, not just things on the web, but just even flyers and information that we can hand out. We've done a lot of just being present in the community, going to doors, going to businesses as well, and so want to always make sure we have something in hand, but also making sure they were outfitting our web presence as well, so that people are aware of the resources and the connections that will be there at the Oak.
Thank you. I appreciate going above and beyond. Whether it was your team knocking on doors, it's important that you touch people seven times. And you certainly did that between knocking on a door, you did it socially on media, you did it in person, you did it with flyers, and you did it verbally, and you also did it in a, with your leadership team. So you have seven touches, which is incredibly important when launching a new effort such as this, and I'm so grateful from a communications perspective that you got that. The other piece is, I just want to tell your team, I know that there are many, but since you have two here, how very much I and so many appreciate all that you do. This was just a wink of the work that you do, and I want you to know that I am aware of that, and that I am incredibly proud and job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogborne?
Sure. Thank you, Adrian, for, for all your information that you have given us, but I noticed as I was listening to what both of you said and reading the slides that y'all made, that there's kind of a recurring theme about people in the community working with people that they trust. And, I mean, having you two ladies here, I'm so glad you're here, so we can thank you personally, but that's the crux of it, isn't it? I mean, you can just tell that, that y'all have such a buy-in for the work that you're doing, and it just means so much, I know, to the people that you serve and to the community. And it's the other theme I saw in everything that you did, is that just so much more is being asked of schools these days. It used to be, you know, it was, you went to school, teacher taught you, you went home. And it's become so much more, it's the center of a community, it's the place where kids get the things that they truly need, and that's what it's all about, is, is meeting their needs. And, and I went to the, there's a picture, I don't, it's on the Full Service Community School page, and there's a picture of the Oak complex, the little house that y'all had, that little icon that you have, that one. And, and I'm looking at that going, that is just kind of encapsulates everything that's there, but also what's more is being asked of schools to meet the needs of kids, because the needs are great. And, but I also like that there are people now doing this work so that teachers can do what they need to do to meet their academic needs, and that's where it really, I think, comes home to roost, that, that this is the important work. If we're going to keep our teachers in the classroom, we need to give them, they've got to have the strength to keep on going. They, you know, can't meet every need, so this fills that gap, and I think it's so much better for our teachers. But, but anyway, thank you so much for, I think we're all getting a phone call, sorry, for all the information that you gave us, and for all the work that you do, it's great stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Ms. Shea?
Thanks, Ms. Consella. Just a, just a few brief remarks. As Ms. Keys so eloquently put, the impact of the telehealth clinic, I know some of us were able to visit on the Charlotte trip about a year ago, a school that had the embedded health clinic, and have real frank conversations with the administration there, and they shared what a game changer it was in terms of access, attendance, and outcomes for the students. And so, I'm really pleased that we have started to kick that door open here in Henrico, and again, we're leveraging outside partnerships as to not put an additional burden on our, our staff in the building. But, as Ms. Ogborne said, to allow the people in our building to teach and to have, you know, and to reach the kids and that sort of thing, and, you know, it's really looking at that, you know, kind of wraparound support, and, and as your team does so well, leveraging outside partnerships. As a school, we, School Division, we're, we're leaning on them, we depend on them. We can't do everything for everyone, but we can provide access to it, and that's what the Oak and our other models are, are doing so well. And Chief Cole Johnson, I appreciate you talking about the focus beyond Title I schools. I know that in all of our districts, beyond Title I schools, we have concentrated and profound area of need, and so making sure that all of our schools are equipped to have that sort of access is, is so important. And I'm just really excited to see our new hubs pop up as we go, VREC, the new Q, all of these things, just providing, again, looking across our vast county, our very, our varied county, making sure all students and all families have access to the support they need. So, kudos to your team. You have begun to pave the road. I know there's a long journey ahead, but y'all are doing such a tremendous job. Thank you for bringing this update to us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Reverend Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So I, I thank the board for allowing me to travel to Utah with this dynamic team. It was a great site visit, and that we were able to see where we're trying to be, so thank you. Thank you again, Mrs. Keys and Ms. Cole Johnson, for the review of the information. So for me, as we talk about continuing to be responsive to our students and communities' needs, and ensuring that these programs are delivering the intended outcomes that we define, such as improving student health, reducing barriers in access, reducing absenteeism, and improving academic performance. My questions are, how are we collecting the data? Or rather, what data are we capturing in order to measure the impact of our telehealth clinic at Glen Lee and the programming that will be at the Oak?
Yep. Great questions. We'll start with Glen Lee, and so, and I'll also introduce, as I've been kind of repositioning the team, we have Seth Knight, who's our Impact Coordinator, really saw the need to have a staff person who was really focused on our impact. I always say to the team, we know we're doing work that matters, but the question we have to ask is, what difference does it make? And so Seth has been working really closely with the Glen Lee team. We are early in, in the data that we're collecting, but we have been able to look at, I think, what was shared earlier, return to seat time, so looking at if our students are missing time from school or not, and if the telehealth clinic is making a difference there. We've also looked at how engaged the parents are when going through the process as well, and then because we have to do the consent forms annually, we're really trying to, trying to quantify the numbers of responses that we've gotten. So we're really excited about the 25% that we've gotten, but right now, we're still looking to increase that. The Oak is exciting and very complex, because there are so many different partners, and there are so many different things that we are, that we're working towards, and so it really looks like having unique partnership agreements based on the shared goals that we at HCPS has, and the partners that we're working with, and really drilling in into some really tangible things that we can grasp and get our hands around to make, to make a difference. So that varies partner to partner, but we'll be more than willing to share that back with the board, so you all can have a deeper look into what that looks like for impact.
No, I appreciate that, because, two more questions. I'm glad you spoke about the 25%. What's the number telling us as it relates to awareness and understanding of the service for our students and families? And what's been the feedback that you've heard related to any concerns families may be experiencing regarding confidentiality and privacy related to the child's health information?
Mm-hmm. Great point. I would love to get with our team that works most closely there. From my perspective, I haven't heard any specific concerns about confidentiality. What I do know is that, and not even our HCPS staff, the doctors have been there, the nurses have been there, they are at all of the family engagement events that they're happening, that are happening at Glen Lee. Again, back to relationship, they are there and being very present, I believe. They've done, they've done some community walks as well, and so we know programming doesn't make a difference, but relationships do, and so we know that we have to have strong relationships in place in order to support the programming efforts that we're creating. But I would say I'd love to circle back to that team to see if there are any concerns or things that people have shared, and can also circle that back to the board.
Appreciate it. The last question for me. As it relates to financial sustainability, much of the fundraising efforts to underwrite the cost of equipment, such as exam tables and telemedicine equipment and other costs associated with delivering services, is provided through HEF. Do we have an update on any financial concerns or any barriers that we might need to be proactive about addressing to ensure the program is sustainable and can be expanded throughout the division, as Ms. Shea has alluded to?
Great question. Great, and thankfully, we do, we have not, that I am aware of, and we talk about that often, there are no concerns on the horizon. I will say that when, when connecting with Henrico Education Foundation, there's a lot of support for this community school effort, and so even as we look at what the build-out will be at the Oak, there are already large partners who are looking to support the funding of that. But again, I will do my due diligence, making sure that I check in with HEF to see, but we've gotten great response and feedback, financial support for the efforts in play.
I knew you were gonna, I was, I just felt in my spirit, I did.
Well, it is such a great question. You knew I was coming in with something more to add, and absolutely, you know, in anything we do, where there's, you know, a partnership, whether we're looking at grant funds or funds through the Education Foundation, we're thinking about sustainability. We don't want to put programs in that we're then going to have to pull away. So, you know, sometimes we see a great success, like the Glen Lee Telehealth Clinic, and certainly for our funders and partners to want to continue the work, we have to produce the data that shows it's meeting the program outcome, so we're really good about collecting that and reporting that. Well, in this case, we see great success, it's something we know we want to replicate, so we all get excited about wanting to do that. So, you know, one reason we have to kind of go slow to go fast is sustainability, it's everything. So we wouldn't take a next step until we were confident that with whatever else we're able to add or stand up is something that we can sustain for the school community. So it's a really important factor, and particularly why some of these efforts may seem slow from the outside looking in, because we really want to build a structure that, that we can sustain.
Well, you know, I'm always of the adage, measure twice, cut once, just because, and so I'm appreciative, because I, I agree with Ms. Shea as far as the expansion. I mean, this is definitely something, as Ms. Ogborne has also alluded to, another example of our desire to allow our staff to be able to do their jobs and have the wraparound supports that they're needed. So thank you both again for that, that presentation, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. And so I, I just want to follow up on something maybe Reverend Cooper was asking about the 25% that have signed the consent form. With this, is it communication of this service? Is it that folks don't feel comfortable with it? Is 20, do we feel 25% of the students is a good number for participation so far? Do you have any gauge on that?
Yeah, we're excited about the 25%. We know that parents and households are still really overwhelmed right now, and so we're excited about the 25. We're always encouraging the team to increase that number, and so again, whenever there are engagement opportunities, we have an amazing family advocate who's there as well, you know, utilizing the individuals in our CLC program. We're constantly sharing that information, a lot of support from the principal, with the principal memos and things of the sort, but also understanding that it may take a while for people to really understand the concept. And so, one thing that I've challenged us to do is to just break it down a bit, and so that it's understandable and digestible for parents and families, but I'm certain that the number will grow, but we are enthused about the 25%.
Okay. Fantastic. I mean, unless it's more, when you're breaking it down for the families, right? Make it really simple, just so that every, everyone just gets how wonderful it is, really. And I love the graphic, and it makes me think about what everybody's alluding to, is the next steps, right? Like what's coming next, right? Virginia Randolph, and then we're going to have the Quiacuzin. But will it look similar? Because then you referenced another fantastic piece of this process, which is community feedback, or stakeholder feedback, right? What does everyone want for their community? So it will not necessarily look the same?
No.
Right?
Our, our county is so unique and diverse, we wouldn't want it to look the same, but what we have done with building the Oak, we have a pretty good process in place now. And so just as we went through a community learning series for the Oak, we would do the same for each of our hub sites, connecting to events that are happening in those areas, making strong connections with the schools that feed into those areas as well, and really using that feedback to help guide the components of those full-service community school sites.
Wow, fantastic. I mean, just the work you all do is really hard work, and... I mean, just the work you all do is really hard work, and just thank you. Thank you for the presentation and all you do. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you again to the FACE team and all who are here to represent the incredible work. You continue to make us proud. That concludes items from the superintendent for this work session.
Okay, well, the next item is unfinished business. Board members, any unfinished business? Seeing none, then the next item would be new business. Any new business?
I have one.
Okay, Reverend Cooper?
I just want to know for clarity, did Ms. Shea come up with the Q or have they already adopted that, the Q?
Well, colloquially, QMS is known as The Q, but I have had my own branding of The Re-Q for the rebuild, so if y'all want to start using that, feel free.
Just want to point a clarity, I know, you know, you like the Oak, so you want the Q, but I just know, I didn't.
Thank you for the point of clarity, both of you. And then the last item on the agenda for today is the announcement of meeting dates. The next meeting the board will have will be this evening. We'll have our monthly meeting at 6:30 right here at New Bridge Learning Center, but the meeting after tonight will be a work session scheduled for Thursday, February 9th, 2023, at 1:00 p.m., and a budget public hearing at 5:30 p.m. Please note, the meeting time may be adjusted as needed, as needed. This meeting is adjourned.